Here. You ought to tell him thank you for showing up to the meeting. He gives a crap about what he's doing. Also, a representative from another town councilman is here because they care about what's going on here. Will.
Alrighty. Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission, members of the public. My name is Will Denji. I'm the Assistant Director for Development Services here with the Town of Chino Valley. So to just briefly recap how we've gotten to this point, it all started roughly two years ago with a conditional use permit request that involves, ultimately involved approximately seven, the horses and cattle mixture across five acres of land. The only way that the town staff was able to kind of get in and get this under control was through a conditional use permit because this individual wanted to sell a property. So he was able to self-restrict himself to get the allowance to sell the hay, which ultimately helped reduce this issue. The individual ultimately removed the cattle, which was the ultimate issue for the property. They retained their horses at about twenty for the property for the five acres. And all was well with the world with that. However, as part of that, it involves five public hearings with multiple neighborhood meetings, and then it ultimately ended in an appeal that went back to the Planning Commission and then was approved through that means. As such, council did direct staff to look into this matter further, research it, research adjacent communities, and then come forth to the town council with a recommendation on what the town can do better to help avoid that situation specifically that we experienced over the course of roughly a year and a half, two years. Staff brought council regulations that were primarily focused on cattle and horses last year, and they directed staff to look at the regulations for all non-domestic animals. So that's how we got to this point in time. This is our fourth study session tonight. Lori, if you want to kind of cover what, get in into that.
So at our last study session, we had a lot of discussion among the commissioners, and we had a couple of people from the, from the town residents who came and spoke about a number of items that we spent a lot of time, you spent a lot of time talking about. So our, we had an original proposal that we were using to dialogue with, and after that meeting, we revised what we were bringing forward as talking points based on the comments that we got from the neighbors. So I handed out to you guys sheets that Will's going to talk through, and I think that you will be pleased with some of the things that we're doing. Chickens was a big deal, and so we're separating chickens out. Chickens aren't even going to count unless you have enough that it becomes a commercial endeavor. And so we have to, we'll have to define that, but we're not, we're not counting chickens before or after they hatch.
Alrighty. So to piggyback off of Ms. Lineberry here, so one of the big topics that came up was from the 4H community, specifically with the idea of the self-sufficient farmsteads. And so those are important. They're part of the community. I think that is a huge staple for the Chino Valley community as a whole. So discussion about an exemption for those uses to where, or are those situations to where the entire property is used to feed, nourish the families? They grow everything that they eat on the property. That would obviously extend into these, or exceed these regulations that are being discussed. So we have essentially at the end of last study session from last month, we concluded with a process to allow for an exemption for self-sufficient farmsteads as long as they are truly that. They're using those to, you know, take care of their families with everything on that property. The topic of existing animals, what do we do with properties that already have this that exceed the existing, or excuse me, exceed what would be proposed? If wherever that ends up, if it's, you know, three cow on a piece, on an acre, you know, you have four, how do you make sure that that four is legally or allowed at that point if an ordinance is adopted? We would handle that through a waiver, which is what we discussed last time. That would be reported against the property. It's there for the lifespan of that animal. Done. Now, if new animals, and they want to exceed that limit, so we set that limit at four horses on a piece of property. You want to have six on an acre. So we have a process that would essentially bring that before the commission. So four horse, you want six horses on an acre, bring that, that request to the commission, make sure it's heard, and then you approve or deny based on that. And then chickens, Lori talked about that briefly. We are recommending that the consideration of fowl, with the exception of roosters, be separate when we start discussing the quantities of animals on a piece of property. And this is largely backed by House Bill 2325 backyard fowl, which was signed by Governor Hobbs on May 21st. It essentially allows on lots, half acre and less, up to six hens in their backyard. That was something new that, that kind of stunned the dialogue and talking points. And then finally, one of the bigger pieces here is the quantities. Based on what we discussed last month, on the bottom of your screens, the, we have had a shift based on the dialogue. So where we are at now, swine and cattle and a rooster being at one limit, one of those, only one, not three, only one per acre. We moved horses and the donkeys over into the four of those per acre. And then we completely eliminated that one thirty-second of the equivalent animal unit. That's not even a consideration with. So we can turn it over to questions to staff or however you want to proceed from this, Chair.
Does anybody in the Commission have questions for Will at this point? Okay. Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to read into the record an email that was sent to the town from Cayman Whitaker. She asked that this statement be read into the record because she wasn't able to be at this meeting, so we're going to honor that request. I will read it as accurately as possible. Dear Mr. Denji, below is a statement that I have been told that you will be gracious enough to present for me during the study session on June 4th, 2024, regarding the regulation of non-domestic animals. I greatly appreciate you doing this as I am unable to attend the study session. Honorable Planning and Zoning Commissioners, it appears that you are in search of a solution for a nonexistent problem. For over fifty years, the Town of Chino Valley has not regulated the keeping of non-domestic animals. If there was a problem with animals, it was addressed as a code enforcement issue, unsanitary conditions, or animal control, animal neglect, or cruelty. Suddenly, the town wants to change what has worked for over a half a century. Existing properties will need to be grandfathered in. Most new properties are tract housing or subdivisions with CCNRs that limit or prohibit the keeping of non-domestic animals. The very few new future homes that will not be in a development are the only properties that a new regulation will apply to. Is the town so lacking in things to do that it will spend time and money on something that not only pertains to a few homes? For twenty-five years, I have lived in a nice site-built home on just under an acre of land. In addition to other amenities, I have a four-stall breezeway barn. Each stall has a twelve-foot by twelve-foot, and in parentheses, equine industry standard with attached twenty-four-foot by forty-foot corrals. I also had a small riding arena that doubled as an additional turnout. No one ever complained that my four horses were a nuisance or that they did not receive the best of care. It is not how many animals per acre, but how they are kept on that acre. Non-domestic animals are an important part of the life here in Chino Valley. Our high school has a Future Farmers of America, FFA program. The teens in FFA raise farm animals as a project. FFA teachers teaches very important life skills in addition to how to raise animals. Each year at the county fair, the animals are sold at auction to raise money for future livestock purchases and college scholarships. In a family that lives on two acres and has three children, one of those children would not be able to participate in FFA. Many families residing within the Town of Chino Valley participate in equine activities. Often, these activities do not lend themselves to everyone in the family sharing one horse. A family of five may well have five horses. If that family lives on two and a half acres, then the children would not be allowed to participate in FFA because they would already be at the limit of animals. The farm would, the family would also be precluded from keeping chickens so as they have fresh eggs and none of the children could have a pet rabbit. That is the sum of that evening.
Some on the back.
Hold on a minute. I realize that I only had part of the letter. This is the last of it. We just got this when we walked in the door. We need to stick with what has been working for our community for over a half a century. Just because some former condominium-dwelling new resident from another state does not like domestic animals, the responsible families of Chino Valley should not have to alter their lifestyles. Please do not regulate, create regulations that ruin the traditional rural life in Chino Valley. Thank you. Cayman Whitaker kid.
All good applause, please.
Alright, so a couple of more ground rules. Please don't applaud after every person speaks, or we will never get out of here. We, we all appreciate the enthusiasm and the care that you guys are exhibiting by showing up to this meeting. Most of us up here in some form or another agree with everything that was in that letter. However, we're not here to regulate something that works. We're here to regulate something that did not work, and we only want to do the minimum needed to keep us from being in that spot again. And another comment on this particular letter is, yeah, for fifty years this worked. I moved to Arizona in 1979, resident of Prescott Valley till 2002, moved to Chino Valley happily, should have done it sooner. Until now. I am a business owner, and I participate in a board, two boards in this town plus some other boards in the community. I have a horse. I have three gun safes. My family fought in the revolution, literally two sides, no baloney. So I understand where you're coming from and what you think, and most of the board members up here are in that same position. So please keep that in mind when you come up and speak your piece. Everybody will be respectful to repeat again. Be concise. If you're being repetitive, just say, I agree with that person who spoke before. We keep pretty good notes up here. Just because you didn't get to say the same thing that guy did doesn't mean that it doesn't count. And Officer Ludwig, gentleman standing right there, is our first responder here tonight. I'd like to give him a pause for his being in the job. Alright, so. What's that?
Turn off cell phones.
Ah, thank you. If you'll please silence your personal communication device, which in English means turn your cellphone down and off, please. That would be good. If you don't, you have to do twenty push-ups when it rings. Alright, so shall we recap a little bit with some of the stuff we talked about, or because we've had this slide up here, we pretty well covered all of that? Feel like you've done good with that then. Okay, so if you, if you have people to speak, we'll do our best to get through everybody.
Kind of lose it a little bit here. Better?
Is the screen, the key screen out in the waiting room on?
Yeah. One of the things, one of the things that we want to make sure you all know is if somebody is going to be in a position to exceed whatever regulation we eventually come up with, there will be many avenues to receive a waiver or an exemption or a conditional use permit. We have to have some basis in order to enforce things to keep them happening like we had over a year ago. So be aware, grandfathering, easy-to-obtain exemptions, that sort of stuff. That's all on the table. And tonight is a discussion night. There will be several more discussion nights. We're trying to collect as much data and opinion as we can. I have a whole stack of these things, so we're going to have to stick to the three-minute limit pretty thoroughly. Otherwise, we're not going to ever be able to get home before two o'clock in the morning. So first one up is Willie Lass. No applause, please. I'm sure he's a nice guy, but we got to get out of here.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm not an honor. I just work for a living.
Basically, Lass, I live at 981 West Center Street. My son and I operate Lazy Owl Ranch. You see our advertisements all over the place. We, our place is very clean and neat. Animals are well taken care of. We, we finish our beef cattle on sweet Cobb and wine, little advertisement there, and we sell our meat in both packaged meat and sides of beef. And we've been doing this since 2015 when my son was in high school. Many of my neighbors are here. Can I hear from some of you?
All applause, please.
Our property's kept up very clean. Cows are well maintained and they are healthy. And so I'm here to just, for our part is to say that it is my son's living. I'm a local businessman also, and, but it is my son's living. He does make a living at that. It's his livelihood. So it affects 4H, 4H FFA, affects rescues. Your decisions will affect pets, but will also affect somebody that's making a living out of their livelihood. So I ask you to consider your own livelihood, your own, your own, what you make money with and make your living, if regulations are going to come in and limit you or possibly take away your ability to make a living for your livelihood. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Please don't applause. Please. Okay. Thank you for speaking. Ed Bloomfield.
I don't really have much to say about the animals. My kids raised animals in the 4H program. They were in the FFA program. They went to state championships in doing so, with a lot of these families back here behind me. The biggest problem I see here in our community that's going on right now, if you don't like potholes in your road, don't move here. You don't like animals, don't move here. If you don't, if you don't want to put up with the smell of an animal, don't move next door to it, and that's the way it should be.
Thank you. Alright, Beverly Wilson.
Hello. I'm new. I've only been here about four years. I have horses. I have a burrow. I have goats. I moved here because I love a rural lifestyle. I love the fact that my neighbors have cattle. My other neighbors have, have burrows, and they have chickens, and the burrows talk to each other. I love this lifestyle. I moved here because of that emblem, having the, the pronghorn and seeing them, and I don't want that to change. And I think if you start to limit how many animals we have on our property, it will become too bureaucratic. We have a rural lifestyle, and we have a whole room full of people who believe in this community. Please trust it. And the other thing is, you're basing this decision on one incident. That lady who sent that email, she lived here for twenty-five, thirty years, and there were no incidents. So don't start to make laws on exceptions. We have a good lifestyle here and people who trust each other and help each other. And I totally agree with the fellow that was up here before. If you don't like animals, don't move here. If you don't like the smells, move someplace else. You could move to PV and jump from roof to roof to roof with no space in between. We don't have that here, and we chose to be here because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina, I'm going to mess this name up. Peroco? Sorry, I can't read the writing very well.
I'm spreading my water bottle. I apologize. Regina Pejoro, I live at 3392 Wendigo Trail. You really want me to be that loud? Okay. So my question to you is, where I live, Wendigo Trail itself has been annexed into the town. However, behind it, Seven Bar is not annexed into the town. That's county property. So what transpires between my neighborhood, between my neighbors and myself itself? That's kind of one of my biggest concerns. I agree with other people as to having one bad apple spoil the bushel. That's not really that great. And I don't know about y'all, but if you've ever gotten chickens and then tried to sex them right away, it, you can't figure out whether it's a rooster or not for a little while. So that just might be a little bit of a problem there, but that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Gary Warren.
Hello, Gary Warren, 2295 South State Route 89, Town of Chino Valley. Agree with most of them. Keep it concise. I've lived in Chino Valley since 1982. It's always been rural. That's why we have choices at Prescott and Prescott Valley, not rural, lot less animals. People move here because of this. I talk to a lot of people between my business and my wife's business. That's why they move here. So the county has a pretty good guideline as far as animals per acre. This is way too restrictive for this community, so hopefully you'll look at the county's guidelines a little closer and maybe model something after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Lee. Melissa, you get to come next. Alright.
Hello. I come to you as a member of FFA and someone who raises livestock. Um, these regulations are not going to help us kids, and us kids are the future of this town. It's so important that we have the ability to continue what we're doing. And I know people who have been affected by this before the regulations come in, neighbors who don't like what they're doing, even though they have a yard that has animals that are well cared for and are not bothersome. And it prevents them from showing. It prevents them from being able to continue with the fair. And another issue that I think of with roosters being limited is that with show kids, roosters are the way to go. Hens don't grow nearly as fast. They get broody. They're not easy to work with. Roosters are much easier for kids to grow and raise and sell at the fair. No one wants to buy it. Everyone wants roosters. And it's just important to remember that we are going to be the people running this town in, you know, twenty-some years, and that if we, if we get prevented from continuing what we're doing now, then we're kind of just screwed. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
So let me reiterate again. And it's not about the applause, fool of you. We're not going to restrict things to where somebody can't do FFA or 4H, which I had a son in one of those programs. That's not our goal here. We're not trying to restrict anybody from enjoying their chickens. The rooster thing is still up for discussion. I just want to put that out there so that you guys understand that we're not here to slam the door on anybody. We're trying to, pardon me? That is a discussion point, ma'am. That's all it is. Okay, one second. All that is, is a discussion at this point, and your input helps change that. So keep that in mind. It isn't anchored down. It isn't cast in concrete. At a point, it will be. And I'll have three police officers here for that meeting. But for now, this is discussion. Your input is valuable. That's why we want to keep moving so everybody can speak. And your name is Melissa Lee. Come on up.
So I am Melissa Lee, and I know you say that we don't want to take away from the kids in this community, but unfortunately, that has already happened. I have been on Yavapai County Fair Board, and this, I have resigned for other reasons. But that, this has happened in our community already where someone, a youth, has through regulations, unfortunately, has had this opportunity taken from them, from having animals on their property. So we're all saying that we don't want this to happen, but we all have to be aware that it has happened. So we all can think and be in these bubbles that say, we don't want this to happen, but don't think that it already has it. So everyone can think that it hasn't, but we have family members that it has happened to already, and you guys can look into it. But yeah, so we have our future here. We have so many kids that want to show. Don't take it from them, and don't say, no, we're going to make these exceptions, and we're going to make sure. Who is? Who's going to make sure? Because all we need is one person apparently to call and say that this person's a nuisance. This animal smells. Swine, one swine per acre? That's ridiculous. You need at least two. For animals in fair, you need a backup animal. To say you can only have one swine? What if that animal dies? That kid can't sell at all. You have to have a backup. My daughter has four animals on our property. Why? What if one dies? She needs a backup. Everyone has a backup. You don't have a backup car? Yeah, you do, because you got to be prepared. Every kid has a backup animal. And these kids don't just show at fair. They show throughout the whole year. My kid's going to go to college. She's going to go to college for animals. Do you want to know why? Because there's kids in this, there's adults in this place that got her involved into this. She's going to do it because of Yavapai County Fair, because these people pushed her and taught her things that I could never do because of the FFA program at this school. So she is our future, and so many kids like her are our future. Don't take it from them. I know we say we're not going to, so let's not do it. Let's make sure that these kids have all that we can give them. Don't, don't change it.
Thank you. Alright, Karen Prune. Did I get that right? I'm sorry. You can correct me when you get up there.
Hi, I'm Karen Friend, 1960 West Road 4 North. How's that better? My first comment is that this entire circus is because of one problem. And instead of dealing with that one problem and then letting it drop, we're going to penalize and punish everybody in this room. I lived in Phoenix where they started changing regulations, and I got ran off, and I see the same thing happening here. We moved here for the rural feel. I moved to Chino specifically because I called to see what are the restrictions on livestock. They told me there were no limits. I had to manage my own herd. It was my responsibility as an adult. And that if there was a problem, if there was a complaint, they would deal with me. I have no problems with that. So my problem is that we're going to start with how many animals per acre, roosters, then it's going to be peacocks, it's going to be guinea fowl, and we're going to keep going down that slope until nothing will be allowed because everything makes noise. If people don't want to live with the noise and the smells and the dust, move somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Shame on you. Peyton Darby.
I am Peyton. I am with the Yavapai County Fair. This may not affect them now. This may not be a problem now. But you take this from them, they're going to go do drugs. They're going to get into alcohol. They're going to run up and down your dirt roads. These kids are going to get into trouble. They're going to find something else to do. I grew up showing livestock, riding horses, doing things that I thought were going to keep me out of trouble, and have boyfriends. I didn't have friends. I had things that said bah, moo, nee. Those kept me out of trouble. The, this is what drives these kids to do that. They are going to be the next generation. Melissa and Ashley are wrong. They will be. But if this changes, where are they going to go? But if this changes, where are they going to go next? I promise you, they will. They will do it. I've watched it firsthand, and it's not fair to these kids. You want them to continue to grow. They you want them to learn responsibility. They want they have good jobs. You want them to go to college. They want to be productive members of society. They're going to need their horses. They're going to need their lambs. They're going to need their hogs. They're going to need their goats and everything else. They will need them whether somebody wants to accept it or not. I moved here from Tucson because it's small, it's rural, and I don't have to worry about life because it's perfect the way that it is. So please consider that when you think about what's going to happen to the next generation, because eventually it will affect everybody else.
All right, Rosa Lee Darby.
I'm Rosa Lee Darby, and I come here representing the Yavapai County Fair. But more than the Yavapai County Fair, I'm going to tell you, I represent youth livestock in this county for the last fifteen years. Your officer Ludwig started in there. Sorry to embarrass you, but he did. His dad was a big swine kid. Ninety percent of these people in here have kids and animals, but this is not just about those kids. Let's start first with the Governor Hobbs thing. Governor Hobbs is looking at a general statute that incorporates our municipalities within the cities that have neighborhoods and communities. We are rule. Rule is what it needs to remain. The county does have regulations that comply. Those county regulations also do include exemptions for 4H, FFA, and youth livestock programs. For a family that wants to get started that has two kids and you want to restrict one pig, they got to pick which kid they like the best? That's not effective. This isn't just about our livestock kids. This is about our rodeo kids. So you want to restrict the horses. These kids have horses because those rodeo kids are working at it. It's not just about the fun of catching a cow and winning a buckle. It's keeping them on a task with something to focus on. This is a rural community that was built on it. Chino Valley had the largest horse club in 4H in the entire state. Chino Valley had the largest 4H club in the entire state for years, and it took a decline, and it's built back up. I currently run the Yavapai County Fair, but there is a demand for that. And there's a Chino Valley 4H Club, but there is also Yavapai County Youth Livestock. I started out with five kids, and now I have over sixty that show up to have a meeting to learn about livestock. It's not about an animal with four legs that goes bah, moo, oink, or any of that. It's not about the sale at the county fair. Do you want to know what youth livestock gives to our kids? It's the opportunity to travel, to go to a state fair, to go to an Arizona Nationals, to go to their county fair. It's to learn to make decisions and to stand up for the decision they made and own that decision they made. I have a twelve-year-old son that can umpire a game better than most adults. You want to know why? Because he has been raised in youth livestock to make a decision and stand by it. So when he makes that decision, that it's a strike, he's not going to back down. Why? One, because his mom has told him, own your decisions and don't you dare back down. Yeah, I'm a little mean. Yes, I am a bounty hand. Perfect analogy. But those kids go on to college scholarships and they judge and they show livestock and they get careers. Not long ago, I took five kids to Eastern Wyoming College. One girl who was a girl who said, my kind don't get to go to college. But I got her a college scholarship and she traveled out of this state and put herself through college because she learned about this livestock. And this Planning and Zoning Commission in our city, your town, is trying to take that away. You have one of the biggest farms for FFA and opportunities in this state. That does not exist in every one of these communities. The rodeo, the kids, the 4H, the FFA, the youth livestock programs, this is where our kids need to have a focus. I have extra animals at my house, and I've watched kids have to be told no. It's more than that. It's about our people that are teaching them where it comes from. Do you want to know how disheartening is when you have a kid that walks through the fair and goes, what does the pig do? And I said, what meat comes from a pig? I don't know. Do you like bacon? Yeah, but that comes from Safeway. Newsflash, for all of you and everybody in this room, bacon does not come from Safeway. And even through our eggs, they come from us as farmers, and that's where we have to teach them. Where does it come from? Can you survive? Can you make a decision? Because like I said, these decisions come far more than the livestock, and it's far more than the Yavapai County Fair for four days. And selling that animal, it's about the life that they learn to build it. It's the rodeo that they work towards.
Thank you for your effort, ma'am. Okay, hold on. To make it clear again, again, mind you, we're not going to take away or limit 4H, FFA, or anybody else that wants to exceed the limits that get set by the Planning and Zoning Commissions and the Town Council's decision. There will be plenty of opportunities easily available to add things to the property if that person wants to go to the effort of belonging to the FFA or the 4H. And currently, the town has an exemption for that. We're not taking away from the kids. I have four kids. I have six grandkids, and so do these people up here. We're not going there. I don't want to hear anymore about how we're going to take something away from anybody. All right, you're not. Listen. We're going to move forward, and here's some more conversation. We're not going to take away the good things that this community offers. More. All right, we're not going to go down that road because it's only for today. If you want to have a political discussion, meet me outside, and we'll talk about more important things than pigs in Prescott and Chino Valley. Lori Darby, how many more Darby's have we got?
How much of the Darby's is there? There's a bunch of us.
That's good. You guys sound like you do good stuff.
I run the county fair. I'm the chairman. I also run Chino Valley Little League. And it pisses me off that you're right now commenting that you're not going to do something when you're talking in the wrong tone.
Well, you know, I get a little frustrated when somebody comes up here and doesn't hear what's being spoken.
I hear what's being spoken. I hear exactly what's being spoken. So let me ask you this. If you're not concerned about these kids, how many of your kids are involved in basketball or baseball?
Okay, so I'm going to give you one little personal story, and then we're not going to go any further down that road because I did not say. I did not care about the kids. I had three boys. I coached four sports a year for seven years.
Good.
So don't sit there and wiggle your finger at me because you think I'm some bureaucrat sitting back here.
You're pissing everybody off with your comments.
It's okay.
So you want me to piss you off, but I can't make you mad, but you can make them mad? Settle down. We're here for a meeting.
That's exactly what I'm trying to point out, but you're when I hear repetition that we're going to take away.
And you're replicating. You're replicating.
What we're here to do.
These kids, there's many kids that need to be here, many animals that need to be here. Yes, the county fair is small. We had fifty-one thousand people come through the gate last year. We're up to about a hundred and twenty kids in fair. These animals are what these kids are. There's many kids that I went to Wyoming, Torrington, Wyoming, to fix cars because they couldn't afford it because they got up there on livestock scholarships. These kids are what we need to be worried about. Yes, do some people get out of control with their animals? Yes, they do. Some people get out of control with their junk? Yes, they do. There needs to be regulations on those. But you're talking stuff that's going to affect these kids. How many of you have came to the fair, walked through and seen these kids doing their projects? How many know how to buy an animal, weigh it at fifty pounds, know that in September fourth, they need to feed that animal three point three pounds of feed so it gains one point eight pounds to make the two hundred and fifty pound weight of scales? We are teaching these kids how to raise that animal, grow these animals, and learn how to spend their money and manage their money to get that animal there. That's what these animals do. Yes, some people get out of control. One hundred percent with you there. Some people get out of control. But we need to realize that that is not one problem is not the whole town of Chino Valley. If you want the whole town of Chino Valley in here, I have no problems bringing them in here. I got big shoulders and a big button. I don't have a problem with it. We don't need fifty million people in here. We need to understand what animals teach these kids. Baseball teaches these kids. You coached for many years. I figured it up the other day. I've been coaching Chino Valley Little League for twenty-four years as a coach. I love the kids. It drives me crazy. Had my All-Star practice last night. I had nine extra kids show up to practice. They're not on my team. They came to practice. You need to understand what you're doing. You need to understand that it might not affect this year, but it will affect next year. And if you keep the kids on animals and out of the drugs, they will stay out of his jail. I work inmates every year for fair, and I understand where the inmates are. I don't want any kid in the inmate jail. This needs to be really.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You understand that FFA is exempt from this?
You understand that not everybody's in FFA, though.
Correct, but the ones that aren't in FFA can get an exemption.
What about those that are?
Any regulation, just like any law, is meant for the people violating it, not the people abiding by it.
Then go after the people that are violating. Then why are we at this meeting then if we already have those ground rules?
There is no ground rule. That's the problem.
You have county ground rules.
The county regs, we'll get into that, how stiff the county regs are, but I believe they're stiffer than these regulations. We'll cover that for you.
So just just to reiterate and
Yes, sir.
and thank you for giving me an opportunity to settle down. I appreciate that.
Not a problem, sir.
So the value that you see in your kids, I understand that value. I did that coaching twenty years ago.
Yep.
So this isn't anything about the kids and the FFA. And you're going to you're saying and you're making an assumption that next year something's going to change to take that away. So for the last fifty years, did something change and take that away?
You used to not be able to have pigs in the Yavapai County.
Since I've lived in Yavapai County, you've only been allowed to have one swine per acre. That's a county law. It's been since I moved here in nineteen seventy-nine.
And that's been removed because I was on part of that to get that removed so kids could raise animals. So if you have one pig and you breed it, now you have twelve pigs. So you take those twelve pigs, sell those twelve pigs for two hundred bucks apiece. That kid just made the money. Now you have twelve other kids that are getting in 4H. I have three extra pigs in my barn right now that these kids don't have a place to have them. I have a place for them. They show up three days a week to clean my stalls, clean this and do that kind of work.
I've been there and done it.
I do. I want more people at my house? No, but it needs to happen to these kids that want to show animals. It's no different than the nine kids showed up last night for practice and me telling them, you guys need to sit over there on the bench and you can't join my practice. I enjoy having the kids there. That's why I have extra animals in my barn. These kids, today I had two girls out of my house, mucking stalls, cleaning stalls, getting ready for stuff. They are learning how to do these things.
And okay, so I'm going to you're out of your time.
Yes, sir.
And and just to be very clear.
Yes, sir.
I respect and appreciate everything that you and your family are doing. And this isn't about the 4H or the FFA or the fact that they're exempt and probably will remain so for as long as anybody can see into the future because it's a valuable part of the community. What we're trying to do here is to set some limits for people who don't follow the rules and who don't care for their animals so that we can enforce minimum standards on them so the horse poop isn't washing into the neighbor's yard like we dealt with a year and a half ago.
I get that.
That's the whole point of what we're doing here, not to restrict kids, Little League, FFA, none of that. That really isn't what we're here for, and I appreciate everything that you're doing, and I have respect for you. And I've been going to the county fair since I got here in nineteen seventy-nine, so I'm very familiar with it. It was better in town. Maybe you guys can go back that way.
Back where?
The town.
Then yeah.
Out at the other place. You're in town now. Is that correct?
We've been in town for the last eleven years that I've been chairman.
Good.
And we went from four thousand people at Finley Event Center, the first year at Prescott Rodeo Grounds, six thousand people to fifty-one thousand people in eleven years. And trust me, the county does not like me and the county and the city does not like me because I'm a bull and my job is to push through things, and that's how I run it. And I'm very respectful for people, but at the same time, fair is where it needs to be, and that's where it needs to be. And these kids, I get what you're saying. I get where you're at. But the kids are our future. The kids are our future.
Totally agree.
And that's where it needs to be. And I mean, yes, did I ask every one of you, when was the last time you were at a baseball game? When was the last time you were at a fair function?
Last weekend, actually.
Last weekend. There you go.
Son playing at the high.
At the high.
Grandson. All right, so let's hold up here.
Little League every once in a while. Thank you, sir.
Let's hold up. What I would like for you to do is give your phone number to me or to somebody here.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to talk to you.
Anytime, sir.
If you could, here's your card. If you please write your phone number on there for me. That's my line, sorry. Okay, Mitzi Khan. If I said the first name right, it's hard to read and write. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mitzi Khan. I'm from.
Can you pull your microphone down? Thank you.
I'm with Now That I'm Safe Equine Rescue, a five oh one C three nonprofit based here in Chino Valley. I've seen animals starving. I have a barn full of animals that were once starving. There are people here that have adopted animals from us. I think one of the biggest problems is I get calls, emails, messages weekly from people here saying, you need to get over to blah, blah, blah and pick up that animal. It's starving. The people aren't taking care of it. I can't do that. That's not my job. That's stealing. The people that need to take care of that are the livestock inspectors. But unfortunately, if an animal is able to get up off the ground on its own, the livestock inspector says, it'll be okay. There's a flake of hay laying there. I'm sure these people are going to take care of it. So I say to everyone that thinks that animals are not being taken care of, don't go and feed them. Don't go and water them. Call the authorities and have the animals taken care of properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Give me a second here. I'm making a note. Sarah Novak.
Hi, I'm Sarah. Wasn't totally planning on speaking today, so not totally sure what I'm going to say, but I don't have horses or cows or sheep. But my husband and I did move to this area so that way we could at some point in the town. Right now I have a lot of chickens and some ducks. I do have roosters. Unfortunately, it seems like roosters get a bad rap where like saying you can have silenced roosters on an acre. So I'm just under an acre. I have three roosters right now. One of my roosters is, well, actually, all three of my roosters, they, I would say crow appropriately. They crow in the morning, and then you wouldn't know that they're there the rest of the day. So under these regulations, I mean, I wouldn't be able to have my roosters be able to crow, and I do like to let my chickens free range during the day, and my rooster is or one of my main roosters is the big protector for them. I've had hawks hang around my property the past couple months, and when my rooster's out with them, they don't mess with them. He's fifteen pounds. He's a big boy, very sweet. So I would just consider, I mean, everything on this list, I hear what you're saying in terms of wanting to regulate, but it's hard for me as someone who has chickens and roosters that I care about all my animals dearly. One per acre is a little hard to comprehend, and especially when, like someone said before, it's not easy to sex them when they're young. And yeah, I think that covers it. So hope that's something you consider.
Thank you for speaking. All right, Clara Hammer. Thank you for speaking. Alright, Clara Hammer.
Hello. My name is Cara Hammer. I actually work in law enforcement at Prescott as an animal control officer. Very familiar with animals and I totally get a lot of the problems you guys are dealing with. I also have ADD, so I'm gonna bounce around a little bit, okay? As far as chickens, I know everyone's mentioning the kids and we gotta help the kids. Behind all these kids are a bunch of adults that have different color projects. Let's say with chickens, if you go to the fair, you see seabrits, you see ceramas, there's Leghorns, there's Rhode Island Reds. You need, um, contrary to what some people think, you need a boy and a girl to make more. So, you need a rooster to go with the matching hen to make more for the kids to show. It goes the same with cattle. Um, somebody had a great point that meat doesn't come from the grocery store. You know, a lot of times people raise their own food. Um, and it is, it's, um, the person that you guys dealt with last year, he is definitely a thorn in a lot of people's side. So, I'm sorry you guys had to deal with him. Um, I deal a lot with hoarding in the city of Prescott. It's a problem, but I think, I think you guys really need to speak to people who have their boots on the ground in the different situations. And again, it's more than just the kids. The kids are getting these animals from breeders, even different pig breeds. I don't know them, but some look like Oreos and some are red with spots. So, you know, and, um, and then I have horses and I breed horses as part of a living. If I didn't have my horses and that income, I'd kinda be like upper middle class homeless. And, um, again, one of the reasons I moved to Chino Valley is the opportunity that living here in this awesome community, you know, presents us and gives us. So, thank you for letting me talk. It's the first time I've ever done this. But if you guys need input from law enforcement or someone that's been in an animal world, again, regulating roosters. I mentioned, um, different color projects and different breeds. But I was also an animal control officer in a big city. I've dealt with cockfighting busts with over eight hundred roosters, you know, on three different occasions. I get it. Roosters can be a problem, um, in the wrong hands. So, just the regulations, you, you guys have a tough path ahead of you. And there's a lot of people with a lot of really valid points. But they all moved here because they love their animals and livestock. And who wouldn't rather have a kid outside playing with their chicken versus on a tablet in the house? You know, get people outside. Um, it's helpful. We also have, uh, oh, the, the, um, the Army and Veterans Place where they have horses over there. God, that would suck for that to get regulated. You know, so there's, there's just vast different points on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
If we were to, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but if we were to have a meeting with county animal control officers?
County?
Yeah, everybody from around the area. Chino, Prescott, Prescott Valley, would you be willing to come to something like that?
Absolutely. You know, we used to do them quarterly and I don't know what happened, but we used to have everybody even from down in, uh, Sedona. We'd have them come from Sedona, Williams, um, and quarterly we would have that. But I think the more people can get together, cause dealing with it in a law enforcement aspect is very different than, you know, I mean, how much does it suck to tell someone to put their dog on a leash? But just cause your dog is friendly doesn't mean people wanna have it sniff them. Um, so, regulations are a difficult thing. But yes, yes, sir, is the answer. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nathan Berger.
So, my name's Nathan Berger. I, I'm Cara's fiance. Um, I've only been here six months. I came from down in the city. The cowboy way of life, the farming way of life is something that I did not grow up in. And I've only recently, in the last three years, become part of it. And I tell you what, it is, it's amazing that, that the people here, you're not gonna get this anywhere else. Um, the, the amount of support that, that this way of life has is just amazing. It stands the hair up on the back of my neck. Um, little town, I grew up in Bullhead City. We didn't have, as a kid, we didn't have it, four H. We didn't have this kinda stuff. Uh, I know a lot of people touch on the four H and all that stuff and I, and I understand that there's special rules and regulations. And there's, they're not gonna be held accountable as much as people who maybe have, or hoarders and stuff like that. But, uh, where I grew up, it was drugs, sex and alcohol. I hate to see Chino turn into that. And if, and, and if, if you start limiting this stuff, you're gonna have your veterans do it too. Because like Cara said, I'm actually the one who brought it up to her before she came up here. Um, that veterans place down the street, I can't tell you how much it affects me seeing older people who have been through hell and back, get up on a horse. That have maybe never ridden a horse before in their life and seeing the smile on their face. And if you put generic regulations in, they're gonna have to kinda fall into it a little bit somehow. If, if, if I'm thinking about this correctly, they're gonna have, they're, they're gonna have to limit them too. And they're not on much land over there. So, that's just kinda my notes on that. And then, you know, you, like everybody else has said, and I don't wanna touch on it too far except for this one thing. You're basing everything on this one bad apple, which from what I understand in this community, that guy's not really that respected anyway. And why not just pay our law enforcement a little bit more money? And our, and our animal control officers, you have two in Chino. Why not pay them just a little bit more money and go, hey, let's go around here and enforce some of these people who have the bad apples, who have the skinny horses and stuff and go enforce that, instead of enforcing the people like us who spend fifteen hundred dollars a month on hay for six horses. You know what I mean? That, that, those type of people should be enforced, not us who care for our animals. Our, my, our animals are our lives. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. And to reiterate, I think it's the commission's goal to do exactly that. Regulate the folks that aren't doing the good stuff with animals that probably every person in this room is doing. Have no qualms with that whatsoever. That's not the goal here. And I appreciate you folks participating in the process that keeps us from going down that road too far. But at least go down far enough to where we can do exactly what you just said. Okay, we get it. That's probably a conversation for the town council. Okay. Linda Steiger. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Susan Reekert. You have to step up to the microphone, ma'am. It won't kill you, I promise.
I've never done this.
Take your time and you're in.
I'm just gonna keep this short and sweet. I back everyone in this room. We're all passionate animal lovers. We take better care of our animals than ourselves, okay? Our animals come first. And I want to, I want you people to know that. Yes, I agree with the gentleman back here. Punish the ones that aren't taking care of their animals. And don't take away what we do for ours if we have a little bit over the limit. I breed my mare. I mean, I get babies out of her. I've only been here three and a half years, but I love it here. That's why I moved here, is to be able to be with other people that love their animals and take awesome care of them. And I just want you to know that, don't punish us because of others.
Message received. Thank you. Okay, so there's two people on the same ticket. So, I'm gonna have the first person come up and then the second person can come up after that. Wayne Moyer. Come on up. You must be, you must be Marcia. Alright, thank you.
Thank you for having this meeting. And, um, some of the, basically questions as far as point of reference for me. And because this is the first meeting that I've attended on this issue. Um, number one, are minutes available from past sessions?
Yes.
Okay, and where would they?
Town website.
Okay.
Also, you can go to the town hall and speak with town staff and I'll bet you they could get you some.
Awesome. Um, the other thing is, how, how are you going about calculating the number of animals? Say, so you have chickens and you have horses and you have peacocks and other sort of that. How do you configure the animals based on your acreage?
Will, you wanna deal with that or you want me to give them the short version?
You wanna give. So, um, can I just talk loud enough and say it's spinning over?
Well, this is actually a recording.
Okay, so what I'll do is if you wanna ask, ask your questions and then I can come up to the mic, then I'll just kinda go through that.
Sure, okay.
He's gonna sit down at that chair right there. Everything has to be recorded to meet your requirement for the minutes.
Alright, so don't shoot us for this. This has been a, uh, kind of a labor of just, of mixed ideas. So, what you see on the screen in front of you, this is, um, a lot of communities and states. Uh, this idea kinda actually came from the state of Minnesota. They have a, what's called an equivalent animal unit out there. And that's based on the amount of manure that animals produce. And they run that based on how many of those animals per acre are roughly acceptable. So, based on this, one acre of land equals one equivalent animal unit. And their breakdowns are on there on the screen. So, essentially you have one acre of land. It would be one swine, which is currently what code restricts.
Which you, I'm sorry. And you have a horse and a couple of peacocks on that one acre?
Correct. So, it, not in addition to the cattle or the cow, excuse me.
Okay, or the swine.
Or the swine, yes. It's one or the other.
So, this is where it gets a little muddy.
True.
So, that if I have, you know, um, two horses, a burrow, um, some swine, throw in my chickens and I'm on, you know, two acres, at what point does it become a health hazard? Because I have all of these animals that you are now trying to restrict?
Health hazard because of the quantity you have or?
Because of the, the amount of poop that my animals are generating per acre. You know, you're only addressing the, the, the horse or the swine for one acre. But if I have all these additional animals, which I may or may not have.
I think I'm getting it.
I may or may not have.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, are you going to come to me and say, I'm sorry? You have to decide whether you want your horses or your chickens.
So.
Based on the poop quantity.
Based, well, so based on this, that, that, that would be the initial framework is if you have two acres, you get two units. That can be broken down based on the weight. So, if you have two acres, you can have eight horses on that piece of property.
I can have how many?
Eight horses.
But what about, okay.
Correct.
So, but that's on bare ground? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's based on the acreage that you own.
Okay. And how is your house and outbuildings and everything else?
That's just as a conglomerate as, as.
Okay, so that has no bearing on your bare acreage that you can have your horses? So, if I have a kazillion square foot house, are my horses allowed to come into my house and live there happily ever after?
Wish.
Or are you going to come in and say, I'm sorry, you can't do that?
So, may I interject?
Sure, please.
Okay, so we had a big discussion about this at the last meeting and the meeting before. And there was discussion to limit to just usable square footage on the property based on outbuildings and stuff. But that became too regulated and too hard to decide what was what. So, we decided that if you own the property and it says four acres on the title, that's what you got.
Okay, so you can base it on that.
We don't, most of us, I think, sitting up here are smart enough to know that the horse doesn't belong in the living room. We're not Nez-Zealns Indians.
Another issue.
So, um, the short version, to bail Will out of a hole that we're getting dug, is that chart up there is a discussion point, as I stated earlier. And this information that you're asking, everybody else is asking, is being documented to the best of my feeble abilities. Plus, it's on the minutes and recorded so you can look at the meeting on the website.
And, um, the other question that I have, I'm still, oh gosh, did I go over or is it wrong?
I'll give you one more minute.
Okay, I'll be quick. Um, and I appreciate the waivers or exemptions for the FFA and the four H and the organizations that the students or, or the kids of Chino Valley are involved in. It's very important to have them involved in something. Um, so I, I appreciate you taking that into consideration. The other thing is, if we have these guidelines or restrictions that you're putting up, at, why do we need to keep going for waivers if this is a plan that you're coming up with? I could come in and waiver myself to death as long as I wanna pay the fee for that waiver.
And if you'll note, I don't know if it says it or not, but a lot of the, a lot of the waivers are issued free.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not about the town making money on frivolous permits.
Right. But it would be me coming in and saying, well, I would like.
I hear lots of laughing back there, but you oughta be a builder.
Yeah.
Talk about being then. So, the point is, we're trying to find a balance here as best as the able to where the people who don't care about their animals and who are not taking care of their animals, which the animal control people probably have tons of horror stories about. Those are the people we want to be able to enforce minimum standards on.
But if we have minimum standards, it then becomes an enforcement issue, not adding more regulation to it.
But we have to set, that's what this whole process is about, is setting minimum standards so we can have an enforcement ability. Right now, the town does not have any regulation whatsoever about animals except one pig crate. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And it worked really good for a long time, but there are an influx of people coming in. And more people means the percentages, not because they're bad or good, but just more people, more problems. And so, we're trying to put something in place to the best of our ability that keeps it to the very bare minimum, but still gives us some leverage to regulate people who are not doing things in the proper manner. And if you have to come in and fill out a free exemption because you want twenty horses on your property and you prove that you can handle it and take care of it and do a good job with it, it's a lot easier than feeding twenty horses to come to the town and get a permit that probably staff, if we can work this out properly, may be able to do administratively and the commission doesn't even see it.
Would, I, I don't, I get, planting and zoning would be where to restrict the size of your lots, I would think. You know, as opposed to having, you know, postage stamped lots, which takes away from the rural field that we're all here for.
So, part, and part of that is our job. And we'll go down that road at another meeting, but right now I gotta keep moving. Thank you. Would you mind stepping up to the microphone? Cause you were on the card. I thought I heard something about digging another hole.
Anyhow, my name's Wayne Boyer and, uh, I just wanted to say about the roosters. I was raised on a farm in Pennsylvania and I happen to like the sound of a rooster in the morning, cause I'm always up early anyhow, so that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Actually, that was important, what you just said.
Thank you.
I have an extra fifth wheel if you're looking for a spot. Okay, Cindy Lee Davies.
Good evening, everybody. I am Cindy Lee Davies. Um, I live at one five four Heidi Lane. I grew up in Prescott since nineteen seventy-six. No offense, but I swore I'd never live in Chino Valley. I've owned a property out here for about twelve years now. Um, and my son was diagnosed with MS and we moved out here. All of my neighbors have pretty much every kind of farm animal, whatever is. All of my neighbors have pretty much every kind of farm animal, whatever is on that list plus some. I love it, I sell real estate. People move here because we're rural. And I know everybody's been mentioning a lot about the kids and that is awesome. But I think it's all about the people. I have 11 grandkids, I can't even count anymore. But it's about everybody. I only have two cats right now, but all my neighbors have animals and I absolutely love them all. But I agree with what everybody else said. One person shouldn't ruin our great community that we love and we live here. And we're here for a reason. And I've had people that swore they'd never move to Chino again and I've sold them a house because we are who we are. And I think that's what we have to take into consideration. And you wouldn't have this turnout if this wasn't such a big issue. And I agree with everybody else is sometimes it's about code enforcement. If I'm a bad neighbor, my neighbors are gonna kick my tail. And then along for, I mean, we have to take care of our community, that's all I got.
Thank you. So just, just a quick comment. It was brought up in with that lady speaking about code enforcement. If you don't have a code and no rules, you have no enforcement. Again, we're trying to strike a balance of minimal enforcement to keep the folks that don't do things the right way from messing up the community. Billy James.
Good evening, I'm Billy. I kind of grew up here, I grew up between Ashfork Williams, Chino Valley, my grandparents were for Southern Baptist Church over here. I ran for council, worked for Family Dollar, I've been here forever, it seems like. Let's talk about emotional support. You know, a lot of these animals for the kids or the adults, they're emotional support animals. They help us. I enjoy going and sitting in my chicken coop with my chickens and watching them. They all have different personalities, they're just cool, they're funny, especially my silky's, just to watch them and stuff. And the roosters, you know, I do have some roosters. I don't see an issue with it. The problem is lying with somebody else. And when you say code enforcement, it is a federal crime to have any kind of animal abuse. So why isn't this coming back with the police department or doing any of that for the people that did do wrong? This shouldn't come back on anybody else in this, in this town. None of us have cats, dogs, horses, sheep, it doesn't matter. You know, it needs to go back to that person, none of us. But again, emotional support, this is what keeps our kids going, these animals do. I see it with my son, he loves his chickens. These chickens have become pets, they do everything for him, they just, they fly to him. I mean, it's, it's amazing the stuff that goes on in my house. But I just wanted to remind everybody of that, thank you.
Thank you. And again, we agree, children and pets and pigs and chickens and cows are important. Okay, Jesse Pearson.
Hello.
Howdy.
My name is Jesse, I live over off of Bottle Brush behind Safeway. I have two boys and I have to tell you a little bit about myself for you guys to understand where I'm coming from. I apologize if I don't articulate anything very well. I have two boys as a single mother. Because of child custody issues, they are limited on what they get to do. There is no sports, there is no after school activities, there is no weekend activities that have to do with anything with the team. Because then they let the team down. Showing livestock is the only thing that my children have to get them out of the house, off their computers, off their tablets, and doing something that they can learn from. Something that can help them, as it's been said, be a part of this community, it's something that, you know, they can learn from and they can move forward and make that part of their life. I know that you say that kids are important and you're not trying to take away from them. But I need you to understand that when you set aside something as strict as this, when you set aside something that is, that leaves no room for the gray area. I know that there will be room for kids to go and get waivers and, you know, you can get more animals on there. But as of right now, my children can have animals where we're at as long as we have a sign out front that says we are in an organization for the youth livestock. I've been through six signs. Because my neighbors decide they don't like the animals, they break it down. What happens if these are our limit? And my neighbors decide they have an issue with it. I'm sure all of you guys can agree that any kind of code, any kind of law is all subject to interpretation. I work at Tough Shed as the permit technician. And I deal with it every single day, every single day. I agree that we need codes in place. I agree that there needs to be regulation. Because there are animals out there that need our help, there are people out there that cannot deal with what they have. But I ask you to please regulate the issue, not limit the number. If the issue we're having is cleanliness, can we set down codes that cover that? If the issue is noise or trash or things leaving our yards that impede our neighbors, can we please put down codes for that? Versus limiting the number of animals. My five year old, which you probably saw acting like an octopus over here, he has his own business. He has chickens, he has 15 hens and he sells eggs on a daily basis. There are probably some of his customers here. Please regulate the issue. And I also do, I know I'm out of time, but I do have a question that hasn't been asked and I think it's important. If you set this as it is forward, what happens to those of us who exceed this currently? Where do our animals go? Where do the money and the investments that we've made in our children and our own selves, where do they go? Thank you.
Thank you. And to comment on what you just asked, and plus you brought up an important point. The regulations work both ways, as minimum standards as we can get. But if you have by right and regulation, the ability to have animals, your neighbors have no say about that because that's what the rules are. So the regulations work both ways. The other thing is, what was your, what was the second question?
Existing animals.
What happens to our current existing animals if we exceed these rules that you were talking about putting forward?
Okay, so there's two avenues, one, the existing situation will be grandfathered in. The other thing is there is going to be ample opportunities for exemptions based on particular circumstances.
Can I come hand on that?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, one more.
As far as that goes, as far as getting the waivers and the exemptions every year. My son breeds his goats, my son breeds his sheep. How many times a year will I be coming in here to get exemption changes?
So that's a good question and I appreciate you asking that because I'm gonna make a note so that we can address that when we talk about what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Monte Lyra.
He had to leave.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Monte told me that he needed to leave.
He left?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So is there anybody else outside that thinks they might want to fill in? Alright, good, so we're gonna put a stop to filling out any more forms. Because we're not gaining ground. The other thing is, just everybody knows, next month's planning and zoning meeting is going to be a regular meeting. But the one in August, am I correct?
Yes.
It's gonna be another meeting just like this one. We're gonna talk about this as often as we have to until we feel comfortable that we've heard everybody and have a plan, just a minute ma'am. And we have a plan that we can take to a public meeting to adopt. That is not gonna happen right now, we have lots of talking to do, we need to hear from you folks. So come back in August so you can have more input. Just so you know, next month we got stuff we gotta deal with that we can't have another study session on, but we will have one in August. Okay. Annabelle Shun, is it a B or an L? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Let her know that I'm putting down that she agrees with what's been said. Joseph Johnson.
Don't need to be this close, is this good?
I'm sorry?
Is this good?
Yes.
Okay, first off, I want to say.
You gotta keep it right up at your face because the thing don't work that great.
First off, I want to say I don't think anyone here is mad at any of you guys, you guys are doing your jobs, I want that, you know, I don't think you guys are bad people, I think you guys are good people. And I know when you have a job and you have people yelling at you, that's a pretty crappy day and you want to get solved. But two major concerns with anything in our government's history, we don't set laws and then stop. We always go forward and make it worse and worse and worse. And animals made America, cattle made America. And if we're gonna limit that, that's food for Americans, that's pretty terrifying. Especially when we're already at horrible numbers for cattle. We have the oldest ranchers, which is nothing wrong, but we don't have young ranchers coming in. We don't have people interested in this beyond watching Yellowstone. So we're, we're darn near screwed as a society. We don't, food is at a record high, cattle prices are at a record not to sell, but they're at a record high to buy in the store. And we're, we're just at a bad place and all of that, the things that you want to limit the most, I'm not saying you guys do, but the things that want to be limited the most are food. Roosters bring more food. Everything else in there, I don't think anyone here really eats alpacas. I also, no offense to anyone with a burrow, but they're a little bit more annoying than a cow. I don't think a lot of people are annoyed by the sounds cows make, I understand that they create a lot of poop. But my biggest concern is that anything that's made in politics will only go forward and will limit rights. Done that with gun rights, it's done that with freedom of religion for all of our time. And when we do that with this, people's livelihoods and what people literally eat, we're, we're just gonna fail as a society. So I just wanted to say that and appreciate the time.
Thank you. Heather Worley, I think, because I can't read the writing very good, is that correct? Thank you.
Yeah, it's Heather Worley. So that was my phone making that noise, it was, I, oh, sorry.
Pushups, we're too far into the meeting.
That was my phone making that noise, it was my alarm to bring my Sonoran Desert Tortoise that we adopted from Game and Fish into the house. Because it can't be outside if it's colder than 55 degrees outside. One of the things that I've heard said several times is that we're doing this because of one bad apple. And you say, yes, we just want to regulate the bad apples. But that's not what regulations do. Regulations are put in place and then people who follow the rules are the ones who follow the regulations, not the people who violate the regulations. I think, and I know that I'm probably late to the party here, but I know that you guys were tasked with trying to find out, find a way to stop what happened from occurring again. What if we defined managing your own herd or flock instead of regulating our own herd or flock? Define what it means to manage your animals. Because then the management of those animals can be regulated. Not, not the amount of animals, I have way more animals than up on that, all of them. You know, they may not be the same animals, but we haven't bought meat from a grocery store since 2009 and I'm not talking about kids. My kid's 26 years old, so I, I do know that Yavapai County does allow exemptions for 4H and I hear you saying that you're going to give us exemptions, but that's great for.
It already exists, ma'am.
Exactly, that's what I'm, that's what I just said.
I mean, it exists here in Chino right now.
Yeah, that's what I said, I know that it is right now. But if for the, for the rest of the exemptions that you're talking about here, that's great right now with the people who are saying, oh yeah, well, just come on in and we'll give you an exemption so you can have more animals. What about the next people who are in office? And the next people and the next people, this is just gonna be a downhill spiral where this whole town is gonna change because you guys are trying to regulate a bad apple. Define what managing your herd makes. Don't regulate this stuff. Our animals are well taken care of, that was an alarm telling me to bring the tortoise in the house. You know, I mean, we take good care of our animals and even I guess I just think that it's so logical, the way that this town has handled this in the past, it's why people move here. I know people in this room that moved here because of the way Chino Valley is so logical about saying it doesn't matter what you've got as long as you manage your own flock or herd. So give manage your flock or herd a definition instead of managing it for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Will.
What's the defining moment on this, is it going, is it voting in committee or is this going on a ballot?
So I'm gonna let Lori give you the process, I know what it is, but she's the official.
So when we are done with all of the dialogue, we will have a draft that goes to the planning commission. They will make a recommendation to the town council. It goes to the town council in a public hearing. They listen to whoever shows up and they decide what's going to become law.
Is the Finley Toyota sale available for that meeting? Because this ain't big enough.
We need a new town hall.
Raise taxes, build a new town hall, that's what we want to do.
Alright.
Fix the runoff and a new grocery store and all the others.
I feel like there's other options for the bad apple. So if the primary, there's two concerns with someone who's mismanaging their livestock. They're not feeding them appropriately, they don't have enough space, we have runoff issues, I think I've heard that mentioned. You know, I build for a living. When we build a house, we gotta have drainage and grading properly. And if we have a field that isn't draining and grading properly, put in a retention basin, make them put in brow ditches, direct the water to a place where they can catch the runoff. You know, there's other options, calling in a vet. You know, have the vet come in and do a body mass index on these animals if they're underweight. Penalize them for cruelty to animals, there's jail time associated with cruelty to animals. I feel like you guys are pushing that you don't have any teeth in what, and to be able to enforce the current status quo with people managing their livestock. One, it's not up to you, it's up to us. But if there's bad apples out there, there's other ways to come about it. You don't have to have an arbitrary set of rules to dictate when you can, I mean, they got Al Capone or whatever it was on tax evasion. You know, there's a murderer and they could only.
He only got one count, Trump got 34.
Yeah, so exactly. You know, there's always another way to come at it if you're creative. I think that's all I got, everything else has been beat to death, thank you.
Thank you. Stop that. Okay, I'm gonna address very briefly what he just said. He's a builder, that's what I do for a living, 51 years. The reason that houses are built the way they are and drainage is done the way it is with civil engineering and all of the things that go on in building a home is because of building codes and engineering codes and town standards. Right now, if we were to look at that from this perspective, there are no codes and there are no standards. It's not political, it's a fact of life and if you're a builder and you don't have a concern about how tight the building codes are getting, then. then you need to have that concern. Pardon? I agree, but you're the one that brought it into this meeting, and I'm using that as an example that we don't have any building codes in the livestock business. There is no code at all. And without some minor ability to enforce, we're not in the county. We're in the town of Chino Valley. And it may, okay, so it may be that we adopt some of the same codes that Chino Valley has. That's what this is all about, is figuring out what we're gonna do, but without something. So what I'm gonna say is, why don't you, what's your name? Okay, to address what you just said, would you please repeat it?
When you squish everything down, you take away every bit of our ability to protect, to maintain, to provide for not only our families, but for our neighbors. Every one of you sits next to and lives next to somebody. And what happens when you lose your home? Or you lose your cost for your eggs, when you have no sugar for you, for your bread? You have to go to a neighbor when you have no more stores. And this, this squishes it all down to nothing. You've already taken everything out of our federal government. We have nothing.
So we're gonna call an end, because we didn't do anything like that. I know I didn't. And you're off track with what's going on here. We're not taking anything away from anybody. We're talking about creating minimal standards for somebody to keep animals so that they're not making a problem.
Which is already taking away from everything that we've already done.
We haven't taken anything away.
We are trying to.
No, we're not. I disagree completely.
Well, I'm sorry, but this is my opinion, and I get to state that, right?
You do, but you already did it.
That you are, that doesn't mean that I am wrong, nor does it mean that you are right.
It doesn't.
You asked for my opinion as a part of this community, and this is my opinion.
I get it. My parliamentarian says we can't have debates.
You're not having a debate. I'm stating my opinion.
You did. So we're gonna move forward to a gentleman named Butch. Okay, your Mrs. Butch?
My name's Tabby Higgins.
Higgins?
Yes. And, um, is speaking out on the working cattle ban and the working cowboys. That did grow this whole area. Um, I know one is on a cowboy's wage. You cannot afford a lot of acreage. However, your horses are your tools, and it's not just one or two horses. You need three to four strings or more. And where do you keep them all? They're out working all day, but they have to be rotated. And then when that horse has worked his whole life, he deserves to be retired in a good home. In the home, your home. I hate public speaking. That's why I wanted Butch to do this, but. Um, and then do we have to go get exemption to retire one of those working horses, but we still need to replace one? Um, basically, these numbers don't make sense. And that's why we do say that the cowboys are a dying breed, is because we are pushing them away. And who works those cattle? Because there's not very many people that will go work cattle all day for a hundred dollars a day, and that's all they're making. And that's just something to take in consideration that did build this town in this area.
Thank you. Erica Smith. Well, you jumped out of line, Doc. Andy Apple, Apple owner? I'm sure I told, tore that one up bad. I'm sorry. Making a note here. All right. Mel, Melody.
Hi, I'm Melody. Um, I come from a place, I'm born and raised on Hawaii, Hawaii. I moved from there because of the rules and regulations that have clapped us down. Basically, we get priced out of, uh, sorry, priced out of paradise. Now, where I'm from, we don't have any predators, so I'm used to chickens and roosters. Has anybody been to Hawaii before? That's all you hear is chickens and roosters. Troops come over and they complain. We don't make rules and regulations because of that. Now, if you know anything about like chicken poop or cow poop or swine poop, it's some of the best fertilizer is. And you're basing your studies off of Minnesota. You're in Arizona. Are these guys not all born and raised? Are you guys all cow?
Ma'am, you need to face the-
Yeah, this is, this is their way of life. This is everybody's way of life. People feed themselves from the chickens, the cows, and everything. You're taking that away. You're trying to take it away with rules and regulations. That, I learned one thing being from an island. You put these rules and regulations on, they never change. I watched that island. You could go anywhere you want, do whatever you want. Before you know it, everything was blockaded. You couldn't go anywhere. You couldn't do anything. There's no reversal on that at all. Nothing gets reversed, and every single one of you guys know that. And I, I know that these guys have kids, generations and generations to come, and that's what you're changing. You're not changing this for them. And if you guys represent the people, you got the people behind you. They're speaking to you and what they want, but you don't represent the people, or otherwise you would not be having this and trying to compare us with Minnesota. We're not Minnesota. This is Arizona. I moved to Chino Valley.
Water in the court. Boys wanted to say that.
Is this a court? I love a court. I moved to Chino Valley to have that lifestyle again, because I saw what it does. And it never changes. Nothing ever goes in reverse. You name one thing that's ever going reverse. You don't, you'd never, ever will you let that happen. Two cows, two swines, nothing. This is their way of life. This is Arizona. Stop changing stuff, because what you said, more people, more problems. You're a planning commission. What is going on in this county? It is expanding. You're making money off of it. There's not gonna be any stopping to building. So you put these rules and regulations for the people that are coming after us, not for the people that are here. You don't care about the people that are here. If you did, you'd listen to every single person in this room, and you wouldn't change anything, because the next town hall, then you listen to it. Because all's I'm hearing in that back of that room is just you telling people to be, I know FFA, you gotta, you gotta, you know, apply for these rules and, you know, these waivers. So who makes the decisions on waivers? And why do we have to change it? It doesn't need to be changed. Everything needs to be, it's like, it's like the officer over here. You know, if he has an issue, he goes and addresses it. The gentleman, the bad apple.
We're out of time. Thank you.
I have nothing else to say.
Terry Bear.
Hi, I'm Terry. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but, um, I think it's important to put my two cents in. I moved here about five years ago. I've been coming to this area for the last 32 years and swore, like somebody else here, that I would never move to Chino Valley, that I wanted to live in Prescott, not Chino Valley. Um, Chino Valley represented to me a place not too far from where I grew up and, um, was very overgrown and overrun. I grew up in the city. I did not have the opportunity of 4H or FFA or livestock or fair. I do remember going to county fairs, and at that time, I'm like, oh, there's livestock. How do you do that? Never got an opportunity to have anything more than a garden and a dog, because I lived in the city. However, I did watch all the dairy farms that were around me from where I grew up disappear to houses, mass houses, which is one of the reasons I moved here. And when we drove through Chino, we kept on driving on into Prescott, and we came back into Chino because it afforded us the opportunity to have land, which I didn't get to have from where I came. And I was not planning on having livestock. I was not planning on having chickens. I wasn't planning on having anything but two and a half acres around me, so I didn't have to have a barking dog and a neighbor that didn't speak English all day long, playing mariachi music, and I didn't know what state or country I was waking up in every morning. And I lived there for 60 years, and it was a fantastic place, and I'm sure you can all figure out where I'm talking about. It was a fantastic place to grow up. It is not a fantastic place now. And part of that is because I watched regulation after regulation after regulation go away. My parents moved from LA County into Orange County when I was a child, when I was three. And I watched it as I grew up, change from farmland and dairyland and cattle to nothing but freaking houses and tons and tons of people and tons of regulations. My grandkids have moved here. I watched them flourish in the last two years because they're part of 4H. I'm now the community leader of 4H in Prescott. I've got that back up off the ground. My granddaughter is into horses. We don't have a horse. I can't afford one yet, but I don't want to be limited on that. And what I'm questioning is when you start putting one regulation in, it will not stop. You might not ever change it again. I might not ever change it again, but it will continue to change. And what's going to, okay, what's gonna happen? I have one question. What's gonna happen to the livestock that these 4H kids and FFA kids have? When they grow up, move on to college, go away, what do their parents do with their animals? Now are we limited? We have to get rid of them? We have to make a choice?
So that might be a question for some of the 4H and FFA folks in the audience, and thank you for speaking.
You're welcome.
Jenny Rose.
Hi, my name is Jenny Rose. Um, I live off of Cooling Road. I moved here a year ago from the Portland area. Um, I have a little story for you. I teach an art, I have an art studio called Blue Plume Studio. Um, with Blue Plume, I have a huge passion for animals. Um, up in Oregon, I raised cattle. I raised sheep and bred them, and I also owned a horse boarding facility. Um, in that, um, when I decided to relocate, because my mom and dad got sick and needed some help, I moved here because they were in Prescott Valley. Because of the animals and the nature of animals that I have, I have a llama too. Um, I had to come to a place that would accept that, and so that made it Chino Valley or Dewey. So Chino Valley it was. I found my place. Um, in that, I worked really hard to relocate and rebuild my art studio, and I offer art and animal adventures. It is for, um, animals now that need respite and a safe haven, a sanctuary, and it also is a sanctuary for kids, um, working through trauma, people working through heartache. I work with domestic violence victims as a whole source of different things. I do ladies night outs, all sorts of things. Um, with the animal regulations, um, I just wanted to share, up in the Portland area, there was a kid that I worked with, um, I was teaching art lessons to, and she leaned over one day and pet my dog, and she was 11 years old and told me that was the first dog she had ever pet in her whole life. I looked at her and I said, oh my goodness, would you like to go outside and feed my cow? You should have seen her eyes when she saw that. So we walked outside and she got to feed the cow, and that day was like one of the most amazing days of her life. And you should have seen her jumping up and down when her dad came to pick her up and said, dad, I actually got to feed a cow today. So by regulating like this, it takes away the opportunities in some capacities. Um, okay, so this is, you know, kid oriented in some ways, but for me, part of my passion has been my therapy. I have had five miscarriages. I have wanted to be a mom since 21, and I am almost 40, and that has not happened. My kids have become my animals. This is my therapy. And so I just want you to know, each of my animals are treated as children to me, and it is my way of life to be able to then have a new purpose, because I thought my purpose was to be a mom, but it obviously hasn't turned out that way. And so for me, to be able to invest in these animals and invest in people that have had trauma, have had hardship, have had all sorts of different types of life journeys, this is a way that I am able to live out my passion and my dream and actually have a purpose here on this planet. So I just wanted you to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you for speaking. Missy Nelson, hard to read the right, pardon? Nelson, thank you.
Hi, um, my husband and I moved here about three and a half years ago. I'm from a small town in Massachusetts, maybe 5,000 people. Um, we moved here because of the climate and because there was no limit on animals. Those are two reasons I love Chino, and I will live in Chino and die in Chino. And I have since purchased three properties, my husband and I have. We're all next to each other, and we have built a business. We have put over a million dollars into our property and to caring for horses. We raise performance horses, and we train horses, and we board for people that don't have the luxury of property. Um, if you put regulations in, that would be taking from our livelihood. Um, we pay for a dumpster to remove our manure. We have two three-yard dumpsters that get dumped every week, and we pay for that. And our place is spotless, and we shouldn't have to be penalized because of the one bad apple. And as for the peacocks, I bought a property on the street that came with peacocks. If you want them, come and get them, because nobody owns them. Nobody owns them. The peacocks aren't owned. Peacocks just exist. And, and so silence them? That's not happening. I don't, I don't know where that's gonna happen. Uh, so it, like, the kids are great, but I, I think we didn't really touch into the, the businesses. Like, I, I know there's a business over here. She's, she's also keeps her facility beautiful and does great for things for Chino, and there's a few others that I know that are businesses. And the money I put into the, the property, it was a local builder. It was a local landscaper. It was a local fence guy, um, a local welder, um, a, a local, um, cowboy that I said, hey, you want to take a couple of my horses to go work cattle with? You know, it's, I'm, I'm putting the money in local, and I wouldn't have done that had there been regulations. I would have gone somewhere else, and I don't think we should limit the people that want to come here by setting limits on our livestock. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Middlestead.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Um, a lot of people are talking about this bad apple. I was here for probably two, maybe three of the meetings for that CUP. This was not a bad apple. He was doing a very good job in what his motivation was for rescuing horses. And he did have quite a few for his horses and cows for his five acres. The issue was the management of that. Neighbors complaining about flies, neighbors complaining about the sewage runoff, whatnot. That got resolved through his CUP, because the CUP was to sell hay to help support these animals and to sell hay to support the animals. That's what the CUP was for, and he was placed with a lot of restrictions. He was not a bad apple, and I want to make that clear. The other thing is, people want to move here, and they don't realize what's around them. They don't investigate, so they want to bring here what they left there and change here what they had there. And I agree with the other people. If you don't like the smell of animals, don't move here. If you don't like flies, don't move here. If you know there's an airport that's in your general area and you buy a house at, at Prescott where they're building houses and whatnot, now you're complaining about the planes, and now you're putting all over the Chino Valley pages. Does anybody know what these low-flying planes are about? Where are they going? What are they? You know, so what I would like to see more than limiting anything, because I'm a horse person, I've had horses, I'm an animal lover, instead of regulating to the nth degree of how many people can have, I'd like to see better regulation on the management of their property. Hold them accountable for, and a couple of people have mentioned that about proper manure disposal, and I know this- And I know this young man on this CUP had to place a lot of things on his property to take care of the management and they're being closely watched by, um, code enforcement. But because we don't have enough code enforcement staff to go to every single ranch and everything to, uh, check out their properties, they rely on complaints. And if they have a complaint come in, they go. And if we have regulations on the management based on how many animals you have per, uh, acre, and if you've, if you've got one acre and you've got seven horses and you're, you've got a dumpster that's taking away all the manure and your property is clean, there shouldn't be a problem with having those seven horses if they're getting the proper exercise, they're getting, uh, taken care of. And this young man on the CUP did not have animals that were abused. All of his animals were either sold to other people. And I know one person on Town Council has bought horses from him before. So I want to put that to rest. This was not a bad apple. And I'm gonna be the one person that stands up for that guy. But there was a problem in the management of the runoff and the flies. But the problem is people that move here from there that now don't like the flies and they've moved next door to somebody which they've clearly seen has cows or horses.
Ma'am, we're out of time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And appreciate- I appreciate your comments about the gentleman that has the CUP. And be aware, not anybody sitting up here made any reference to him as being a bad apple. We know the difficulties he's had and how hard he worked with the town to get his place straightened out. And that is one of the reasons that we're trying to get something in place to not have to go there again. Thank you. Is it Gabby Higgins? Gabby Higgins? Oh, she did? All right, we're done. What's up? Oh, okay. Cause I had Higgins here. Okay, thank you. All right. So I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting now. Appreciate everybody speaking here tonight. The discussion got a little heated, but that's the American process. I want everybody to be assured that, that at the next meeting, you're all gonna get the same amount of time to speak, even if you're speaking at the same thing again. Hopefully we don't do that, but that's okay. Um, all these comments I documented myself as well as it's on the meeting minutes and on the video, which you can watch at the town's website. We thank you very much for being here and participating in the process. So I'm going to close that portion of the meeting and entertain a motion to adjourn. I move we adjourn. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Where's the gentleman?
A second. A second. A second.